People are coming here today to see the movie Coco by Disney. And they're also here to see Live Mariachi, which is super exciting.
We're very grateful that we're here performing for the last time. This place has a lot of history. We're very grateful that we're going to be part of that history. There's going to be a renovation of this location. It's going to be open in two years. We're going to try to put a good show and make sure the kids and the parents have a great time today.
The movie and Mariachi is part of a partnership that we're doing with My Valley Pass.
My Valley Pass is the number one visitor guide for the San Fernando Valley. And we're kind of a centralized online space to tell people what's going on all around the valley. We were very excited to get in touch with the Madrid. What's really exciting about being here today is that this location, though it was renovated over time, it actually opened as a movie house in 1926, and then later on became mostly a performing arts space. So the fact that we're actually showing a movie inside right now is really, really exciting. And we hope to be able to do that in the future when the theater reopens after its major renovation.
The Madrid Theater is a historic icon here in the community. And the council member is really interested in creating an arts district in this corner of Sherman Way. So we want to definitely support that and also reach out to the community and help be a part of the community that provides performing arts in a way that normally doesn't happen.
In a year or two, we'll have a new Madrid Theater, and it's going to be spectacular. The council member, Bob Blumenfeld, has allocated $4.8 million to renovate this theater.
This is a very family-friendly way to introduce theater. And hopefully in the future allow them to see performing arts they may not have an opportunity to see otherwise. In comparison to most theaters that show performing arts, our ticket prices are much more affordable. And this means they're more accessible to the overall community at large. So we're super happy and we can't wait to reopen with the new renovation project and start this all over again with everyone.
It's part of our culture. The movie that we are watching, Coco, is a movie that identifies our tradition, our roots, our family history. And what better way than to have it with Live Mariachi?
Summer movie nights bring magic to our city of stars. And Council District 13 chose Encanto to inaugurate its annual film series. CD13 also joined forces with community organization Sawlift to provide a free food giveaway at the event in Juntos Family Park. Check it out.
We're out here in Glassell Park with our weekly food distribution event. This is where we feed over 200 people with food, the bags. We're also doing our annual film series. Today is the kickoff. We're showing Encanto for all the families of Glassell Park. It should be a good event. We've been helping a lot of community members with food insecurity. Beans, rice, eggs, milk. We're also giving away popcorn and the Subway sandwiches.
What is happening here today is just amazing. We have all of our community members here from Juntos Park coming out not only to enjoy watching a wonderful movie in community, but we're also bringing resources to our families here in this area. All throughout the summer, we will be feeding over 1,000 families. We provide food that is fresh, healthy, but also is foods that are part of our culture.
Right now, they give us bananas, potatoes. It helps out a lot because everything just went up so high in pricing. Families that can't afford fruits and vegetables. There's going to be a movie and stuff, so that's good for the kids.
The first annual Bike Safety Camp was recently held in the Pico Union community. 30 bikes plus accessories were donated to the children that participated in this unique event to learn safety tips from none other than the LAPD Motorcade. It's never too early to learn about best practices for navigating the roads and streets of LA.
Today, we had a beautiful event where we invited all of the community to the first, what we believe will be, an annual event, the Bike and Safety Camp Day. The Loyal High School was able to get some of their alumnis to donate 30 bikes plus accessories. It was gloves, locks, water bottles.
The LAPD Motorcade was here. It is fun riding a bike, but you also have to be alert and be careful of the traffic.
We brought the West Traffic Division motor officers to teach the kids about bike safety and how to ride their bikes in the streets.
My little kid is very happy because he won his bicycle. And he's going to help him do exercises to not play too much with his phone.
People are more distracted in their cell phones. They're paying attention to not really the road. It's very important for you guys to just slow down and be more mindful of the pedestrian traffic.
A monument is not just a statue. It serves as a good reminder of what we value in society. In this week's feature story, Maria Hall Brown sits down with the Los Angeles Cultural Heritage Commission to get a glimpse into the steps to designate historic cultural monuments. Let's hear this story.
You think of a monument, you probably think of a statue or something like that. But it's also really important to think about the fact that a monument is something that serves as a good reminder, which is why I am so thrilled today to be joined by Barry Malofsky, who is the president, and Gail Kennard, who is the vice president of the L.A. Cultural Heritage Commission. What qualifies a property to be culturally significant, especially in an area like Los Angeles?
I think the primary qualification is it tells a story. There are three primary categories that we look at. One of which is, is it a site which is important in city, national, or state history? Did something important happen there? The second criteria we look at is whether someone important, someone of note, lived there. And the third category, which is the one that most people assume is what we look at, but really it's just one of the three categories, is it architecturally significant? Or is it the work of a master architect?
Why is this important? Why is it necessary to maintain the forward momentum and make sure that these places are acknowledged and recognized?
We have over 1,200 historic cultural monuments in the city. But that's just a small fraction. It's like 1,000th of a percent of the actual number of structures in the city of Los Angeles. So people shouldn't get the idea that we're designating all these buildings and nothing else can happen with them if we designate them. If we designate a property, we can't preserve the use.
The Morgan House, which, as we now know, is the Harbor Area YWCA, the architect of this particular building was Julia Morgan.
Julia Morgan, yeah, who's an amazingly interesting woman architect. She became the first woman to be licensed as an architect in the state of California. Most people would know her because she was the architect for Hearst Castle.
Leonese Adobe is at the westernmost border of the city of Los Angeles. It was significant both because of its location, because it's an adobe from the early settlement of the city. Also significant is the diversity it represents because Leonese, in fact, married a true MASH Indian woman.
The Golden State Mutual Life Insurance Company building has so many stories within it that it could probably fill its own library.
Yeah, the Golden State Mutual Life Insurance Company was a response to the lack of ability for African Americans, not only in Los Angeles, but all over, to buy life insurance. So some very industrious business people, including William Nickerson, started this company to sell life insurance policies to primarily African Americans in Los Angeles and other places. And the company did very well.
If there's a historic building or building you think is important on your street, in your neighborhood, that's important to you, that's part of the history that you think is important to the city, bring it to the commission, go through the nominating process, or bring it to your city councilmen and have them make the nomination. Because there are 800,000 properties in the city of Los Angeles. You know, we can't identify all of them. So we rely on the public, historians, preservationists, but a lot of the community members to sort of bring to our attention.
Immerse yourself in Japanese culture at the Nisei Week Festival. Enjoy a screening of the film Luca at Hanson Dam or attend the next free summer concert at Warner Ranch Park. All this up next on Things to Do.
If you love immersing yourself in Japanese culture and traditions, you have to drop by the Nisei Week Festival. Some of the wonderful free events include a full day of anime art and decorated cars on August 13th, the beloved Grand Parade on August 14th, and a Taiko drum showcase on August 21st. The festival concludes on August 21st with a traditional Japanese street dancing performance. The Nisei Week Festival is open to everyone and will take place at different locations and venues around Little Tokyo in downtown LA from Saturday, August 13th until Sunday, August 21st. For more details, check out niseweek.org. Attention families and film lovers in the valley. Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez is holding her final summer movie night with the animated film Luca at Hanson Dam Aquatic Center. Bring your blanket, towel, and lawn chairs to enjoy this free children's movie that follows a young sea monster boy who experiences a life-changing summer adventure. Families will enjoy lots of free and fun activities for kids before the movie begins. The Council District 7 Summer Movie Night screening of Luca will take place at Hanson Dam Aquatic Center and Lakeview Terrace on Friday, August 12th, starting at 6:00 p.m. For more information, visit cdc7.lacity.org/events. What better way to spend your Sunday night than attending the free summer concerts at Warner Ranch Park? On Sunday, August 14th, get warmed up with the emerging artists' opening act, The Silver, an L.A.-based showcase band with multi-genre originals. Then get ready for the headliner, Billy Nation, a tribute to Billy Joel. Honoring one of the bestselling artists of all time, the performance will feature pianist and vocalist Adam Shapiro. The summer concert at Warner Ranch Park featuring Billy Nation happens Sunday, August 14th, starting at 5:30 p.m. The concert will take place at the Nora Ross Fan Shell Pavilion in Woodland Hills. For more details about the concert series, which goes through August 28th, visit valleycultural.org. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's it for this edition. I am Natalia Bobow. And from all of us here at LA This Week, thank you so much for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. And we're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more LA This Week.
Let's protect our wildlife together. Please, no smoking in Griffith Park.
I'm Nury Martinez, the president of the city council. Madam clerk, please call the roll. If you're going to continue to disrupt this meeting, I'm going to ask you to leave. Yeah, grow up. Seriously, man, we're trying to start a meeting. Madam clerk, can you please call the roll? Blumenfeld. Bonin. Buscaino. Sadio, absent. De Leon, absent. Harris Dawson. Corret. Krikorian. Lee. Martinez.
Present.
Ofero. Price. Rahman. Rodriguez. Twelve members present and accord, Madam President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes of August 5th, 2022.
Ms. Rodriguez moves and Ms. Rahman seconds, next.
Commandatory resolution for approval.
Mr. Harris Dawson moves and Mr. Buscaino seconds, next.
Madam President, today is Tuesday. It's time for the flag salute.
We all rise for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Price, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, sir?
Thank you, Madam President. Right hands over your heart. Ready to begin. The pledge of allegiance of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Madam clerk, can you please run through the agenda?
Madam President, there are requests to continue item 12 to September 13th, 2022, and item 14 continued to August 23rd, 2022.
Okay, without objection, that would be the order. Members, you wish to call any of these items special? Mr. Blumenfeld?
Yes, item 15 for comment.
Item 15 for Mr. Blumenfeld. Any other specials members? Please press your button so I can see you. Did you press... Mr. Bonin?
16 for a separate vote, please.
Item 16 for Mr. Bonin. Ms. Rodriguez? 15? Are there any other members on the queue for specials on today's meeting? You see any... see no other members? At this time, Madam Clerk, there are no available items for us to vote on. Is that correct?
That is correct. There are cards on items 1 through 26, 34, and 39 through 43. It's time for a public comment now.
All right, thank you. I'm going to take multiple speaker cards. Mr. Arnold Sachs? Mr. Arnold Sachs? And members, we're going to take 45 minutes of public comment. Mr. Arnold Sachs?
Come on, Mr. Sachs. We've got a lot of people waiting.
Mr. Arnold Sachs, you are speaking on all of the items, including general public comments. So why don't we start with your three minutes of items and then move into general public comment? Go ahead.
Okay, and just sorry, before we start, make it clear that's items 1 through 11 and 13, and then 17 through 43. Let's stick to the items because we've got a lot of people here.
Input. Do you pay attention to these agendas, by the way? Do you read them for the form or the content?
So let's continue with the items, Mr. Sachs.
Okay, so item number one, there's actually no items on this agenda. This is notices for public hearing. Do you send out notices to the people for these lighting districts so they can attend these public hearings? And since they are public hearings, aren't they supposed to be exempt from the Brown Act requirements? There are no requirements on this agenda about the Brown Act. But public hearings are different from the agenda items. They're public hearings. People should be able to attend a public hearing without having to count against their time. Number 17 refers to a lighting district, and it says the tax is going to be for $57,000, but it's from 2021, 2020, 2021 tax year. This is 2022, 2023 tax year. So what the fuck, you're going back two years? You're going to collect that money? The other items are all for this tax year.
Mr. Sachs, hold on, hold this time. Can you not scream into the mic? It makes it very difficult for the interpreter to interpret.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, by the way, there is no sign language interpreter anymore. Why not?
There's an interpreter to my left. Yes, there is.
So, by the way, so the other items noticed for the lighting districts are all for this tax year. So why is number 17 go back two years? We don't have an answer. Number 34 refers to the Los Angeles Housing Department. So why don't you combine the city's housing department with the county's housing agencies? We have a plethora of county agencies. We have a city agency. We have a federal minimum wage, which I don't think has been raised since the city has raised its minimum wage. And that means a lot of people are priced out of getting housing because GR is based on the federal minimum wage. It's all about the devil in the detail. Number 41 refers to an emergency, about the monkey pox. So why can't he make it emergency to roll back some of these prices? Like on the price of gasoline or the price of food that always seems to be going up. Number 42 refers to some kind of track map, but there's no more mention of any quimby fees. So that means it's losing parks.
You can go into general, Mr. Sachs.
Yeah, okay, my general public comment. By the way, there's an item here referring to grants. Grants are for 20 years. So what the fuck good is a grant that's for 20 years? People need money now. My public comment refers to people aren't reading their motions into the minutes, so there's no record of the motions. You've got to be able to read the motions into the minutes so there's a record of some action being taken. You don't do that, then there's no action being taken. That's why everything is so fucked up. By the way, I still think Jessica Law would make a great mayor for the city. You haven't put a reward together for the doctor that was killed at County USC in East Los Angeles. And you haven't put a reward together for the young kid who was shot at a marijuana dispensary whose mother was a member of the bargaining board for the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs.
The next speaker is City Luz. Anyone here with that name? City Luz, are you here? Is that? Si.
Hi. First, I want to acknowledge that we're on Tongva Land and Tongva people are still alive.
Speaker, can you hold on so I can tell you what items you signed up for?
What?
You signed up for general public comment in items 1 through 14. So why don't you start with your items and then move into general public comment?
So why can't you give people housing? Giving people housing makes everyone safer. There are too many abandoned houses, and you're letting people die on the streets. There are a lot of unhoused families in L.A., and you're leaving children on the streets. Stop speaking for kids. Let them speak for themselves. I know sometimes people can be scary, but there's a solution: housing. It means people can go through their issues and trauma in a safe space. Mind your own business and don't call the cops. Leave them to their own thing and let them get through it with housing. Listen and look at me and have respect. People shouldn't go to jail for having mental health issues or be on the streets for having mental health issues. People should get help. Do what's right and know what's easy. Nuri, you're a traitor to brown people, and I'm ashamed to call you a brown person. You're a traitor.
Sorry, speaker. So you're obviously on general. Okay.
The next speaker is Bella Lestrange. Are you here, Bella? You signed up for items 1 through 7 and general public comment.
Okay, I'm a resident of occupied Tongva Land, a member of Reclaiming Our Homes, and also a member of Maternal Mental Health Now. And I just want to let everyone know that Nuri Martinez received an award from Maternal Mental Health Now for advocating for mothers with mental health issues. And I want to say that she should be revoked of this because instead of helping mothers, she's giving more trauma. The shelters are not an option for families. They actually separate families. They criminalize children for even making noise, and it's not an option. And I know this because I used to work providing these resources for families when I was in that same situation. I knew I wasn't going to cause more trauma for my children, and I was able to reclaim our house in March 2020 because you all weren't doing enough for our families. We had to take people power to do what's right for ourselves. And there's three empty homes per one unhoused person. Why can't you just provide housing? You want to keep people safe? You want to keep our children safe?
Speaker.
Give us housing.
Speaker, so that was obviously general.
The expansion of 4118 will cause more dead.
Speaker, speaker, so that was obviously the general public comment. Do you want to speak to the street lightings or the street vacation?
Everybody else could talk all this.
All right, so thank you very much. So we're going to go on to the next speaker. We're going to go on to the next speaker. No, no. All right, thank you, speaker. Please go sit down right now. You're disrupting the meeting. We're going to move on to the next speaker. Speaker? Speaker? No, no, no. Okay, thank you. We're going to, there are a bunch of people in this room who all want to speak in a limited time. Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
So please.
Thank you.
Okay, so speaker, you're disrupting the meeting.
The next speaker is Dr. Truth Bay. Are you here? Dr. Truth Bay, are you here? Thank you. No, you did speak.
Speaker, you're disrupting the meeting. Please sit down now. You'll be ordered to leave.
Dr. Truth Bay? Dr. Truth Bay, you're speaking in general public comment, and you signed up for items 39 through 43, and 15 and 16. Go ahead. You can start with your items, please.
All right, first, I want to thank you for calling me today. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, whether you like what we say or not. We have a constitutional right to let you know how to fix these issues. So I want to go over 39. Martinez and Rodriguez relative for funding traffic calming measures. Media maintenance for council District 10. Do we not have a leader for District 10? I'm just confused. Urb Wesson, what's happening District 10? Will the real leader of District 10 stand up? Okay, we have nobody. All right, so moving towards agenda number 40. Consideration for District 1, funding of $300,000 for public safety, community services, gang reduction, and prevention services in and around MacArthur Park. MacArthur Park is just like Skid Row. We have no leadership. We have no one can figure out how to house the homeless. You guys are in partnership with some of the gangs and acting like you're trying to help the people. So I want to know what exactly do you guys do when you're not here Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays? Do you deliberate? Do you have proposals ready? Do you actually execute stuff that's presented to you? Does your chief of staff follow through? Do you do a census in your own district? Do you engage with the homeless encampment in your backyard? Before you come and bring agendas, it shows that you are not in tune with homeless solutions, and we're okay with that. So, Nuri Martinez, I do respect you as a woman, but as I stated before, I don't have someone that looks like me that's representing on this board when 59% of the homeless is black women. You don't have DV funding for domestic violence. And then when we go through the policies and procedures that you tell us to actually get funding, you have people like Lassa that's in the forefront that absolutely have no clue on what to do.
Let's get back on the items. We can go to general, but let's get back on the items.
General public comment?
You want to go to general?
Every time Brown Act is being violated, that's $15,000. Every time that you do not house the solutions that's given to you, it's $10,000. I know it may seem like how that's going to happen. We don't let our right hand know what our left hand is doing. We just know that your time is going to be very limited, city council. You have 15 districts for 4 million people, and you only have five county board supervisors for 10 million people. 20 people over 15 million people doesn't make sense. That's why shit is not working. It's not working. So what's going to happen is that there is going to be some real people power coming in 2023. Just continue to not do your job and see how fast you'll be replaced by the people for the people. Si se puede.
The next speaker is Amy Castillo. Ami Castillo? Ami Castillo, are you here? Ami Castillo, are you here?
Mr. Castillo?
If I don't see you, I'm going to call the next person, Ami Castillo. So anyone here with that name? The next speaker is Evan Taiba. Evan? Taiba? Evan Taiba's not here. Martha Escudero? Martha Escudero? Next speaker is Victoria. Victoria, she's not here. Are you, Victoria? You signed up to speak on items 1 through 7 and general public comment. Start with your items, please.
I'm here to talk about my friend Victor. He was an unhoused father who was living in an encampment with us. As a member of our encampment, Victor provided security and food to members of our community. Unfortunately, less than three weeks after moving into his Section 8 building, Victor was killed by police less than a mile from Section 8. If you really cared about the well-being of houseless families, if you really cared about the well-being of houseless children, you would do something to stop cops from willfully killing people on the street. If you really cared about stopping more families from becoming evicted, you would make sure that landlords were not evicting people who are waiting on their ERAT money to be distributed. There is a moratorium on evictions, and yet people are still being evicted to the streets while your city council sits here and does nothing besides provide more law.
So, speaker, you've taken your general public comment. Do you want to speak on the items? No, sorry.
Thank you.
So again, so again, speaker, speaker, we want to go to the next speaker. Thank you. Thanks.
The next speaker is Hamid Khan. Hamid Khan, are you here? Hamid? Hamid, you're speaking on items 1 through 3 and general public comment. You can start with your items, please.
Oh, I put in items 16, 40, and general comments.
Those are already closed for public comments, but you can talk, oh, 40? Hold on. Hold on. Mr. Sir, you did not sign up for 40. You wish to sign up, you want to speak on 40 as well? I cannot hear him. Can we, you signed up for 1 through 3. You want to also speak on item number 40?
Yeah, 40, 16, and general comments.
You can speak on 16 and general public comment. I'll add 40, so you can speak on 1 through 3 and 40 in your items. So I'll give you three minutes.
All right.
And then your one minute for general public comment. You can talk about 16 if you wish.
Start with what 40 is saying. So the whole idea is about this whole community service and public safety and gang reduction. Now, we know that Skid Row and MacArthur Park are not considered where people are existing. They are looked at as laboratories. They are looked at as laboratories. MacArthur Park has been the site where the first facial recognition technology was experimented. MacArthur Park has been the site where license plate readers have been experimented. MacArthur Park has been the site where closed-circuit television cameras have been experimented. Same thing has been happening with Skid Row. So what we are seeing now is this sleigh of hands with this bullshit language of community safety partnership and community policing, which is nothing more than goddamn counterinsurgency. This is, and these are counterinsurgency tactics which have been created to trace and track and monitor and stalk people. Now, when you bring in this garbage about coordinated entry system, we look at the broader information sharing environment.
Speaker?
Where people are being constantly followed and traced and tracked.
Speaker, so do you want to go into item 3 or into general publica?
So then we get into all these monies.
I think you're going to general, so we'll send you to general.
That are being asked to expand parks and rec services. The language when you look at items 1, 2, 3 is about preschools, is about extending education. But in the same vein, as they're speaking about it, they're removing people from there as well. Now, who can have access to education? Who can have access to any learning spaces when families are living in their cars? When children are being, my daughter is a high school teacher, and she tells me that families are, and she teaches in south central Los Angeles. And she goes, three kids in a car, one computer where mom is looking for a Starbucks to dial in the internet, right? And then what you're doing is to remove people from these facilities and remove any access to education because why? Because you hate people. You hate people living in poverty. You hate people who are not contributing to your thing. It is all about development. It is all about real estate. It takes me to my general comment.
Thank you, speaker. Thank you. Thank you, speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, speaker. Your time has expired. Speaker, speaker, you're disrupting the meeting, and there are a lot of other people who want to speak. Speaker?
The next speaker is Steve Diaz. Steve Diaz? Steve Diaz, are you here?
Speaker, speaker, you're disrupting the meeting. Please go sit down. So you've been warned, so the council president just indicated that you should, don't come and shut. The council president has indicated you are expelled from the meeting. Sergeants?
Steve?
The council president has indicated that he is removed from the meeting.
Steve Diaz?
You've been ordered to quietly leave the meeting. Please do so now. Speaker? Speaker, you're disrupting the meeting. You've been ordered to leave quietly. Please do so. Please do so. Thank you.
The next speaker is Steve Diaz. Steve Diaz, are you here? Steve Diaz? Steve? Steve, you signed up for items one through three and general public comment. Why don't you start with your items?
So I'm just gonna say good morning, City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to come before you and talk to you about how your policy is nowhere near what it actually is. Forty-one eighteen, a year ago, was talked about as an opportunity to create housing, to ensure services were being delivered, and yet, a year later, homelessness numbers are up again. Rental affordability is even at an outstanding rate, and more and more people are becoming houseless at the same time. Yet, you continue to pass, you continue to pass banishment zones as part of, as part of forty-one eighteen, and you got so tired of banishment zones, now you said, let me just make a blanket policy that creates redlining across the city of LA for about twenty to forty percent of the city under the auspices of children's safety. If it was really about children's safety, you would be investing more money in permanent supportive housing, wraparound services, and ensuring that people are able to access housing as needed, not into increased policing and a budget-proof, budget-recession-proof police department.
Thank you.
Forty-one eighteen creates banishment zones and keeps people away from their neighborhoods.
Do you want to, thank you.
The next speaker is Jay Swan. Jay Swan, are you here? Jay Swan? Jay, you, you signed up for item number forty and general public comment. Why don't you start with your item, item number forty?
Yeah, I guess we could start with my item number forty. I've seen so many overdose deaths happening around MacArthur Park, and I've seen one harm reduction organization that works their ass off over there. And for what, three hundred thousand dollars to LAPD? That's your guys' solution? More community policing? You know what that's gonna do, right? Criminalize the very people that you supposedly stand with, Nuri, right? The working class? The majority Latinx people of MacArthur Park? Of Wesley? No? No. You're gonna give money to Rampart, a division that's notorious for using their money with gangs really well. Yeah. Google the crash scandal, anyone who doesn't know. I guess I'll just move on to general now. I'm glad that Kevin is here. I wonder where Gil went, because when Kevin, I'm here for our folks at El Pueblo who are currently being swept one block away from City Hall. Kevin DeLeon, in your district, when you brought the host team, the sheriffs, out with you and your, your team to do outreach, when you brought forty-one eighteen down on those folks, you went to KTLA and you said it was about housing, 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 and the old ways where we used to push people from one block to the other, one district to another, right, Kevin? That's exactly what is happening today, as it does every other Tuesday, when people are moved across Cesar Chavez from your district to Gil's district. When I got into this work, I saw people getting swept from Gil's district back to your district, which was currently sleazy-weezy's. But anyway, your point to the news, forty-one eighteen hasn't done anything except exacerbate that and exacerbate the death and the harm that has continued. And I think it's really ironic that you made the grand a forty-one eighteen zone, the grand which is owned by the same developers who got sleazy-weezy in the pen, by the way. You made that a forty-one eighteen zone and named it a homeless shelter, even though everyone is getting evicted in less than two months.
Next speaker.
So thank you, Kevin. How does that work out for you? Is it gonna stay a forty-one eighteen zone if everyone gets evicted?
Michael S. is the next speaker.
We're gonna move on to the next speaker.
Michael S.?
Michael S.?
My middle name is Michael, so. I know you wouldn't call.
You signed up for item number forty and general public comment.
I know you skip over my name every time, so I put in my middle one this time. So item forty, as Hamid said and Joanna said, you know, you're diverting money to LAPD, the same LAPD where their killings went up one hundred and sixty percent last year. They shot eight people in the month of August, and you're all gonna give them more money, right? And they all continue to perpetuate this violence. But the weird thing about this, you know, Sadio's not even here, so we can't talk about it. Gil Sadio wants to make it illegal to be poor in about like fifty percent of his district. Meanwhile, this item forty, you're giving more money to the cops at MacArthur Park. MacArthur Park Gil has made illegal to be poor in. So you're just using the police state to, to push poor people around and give them more money to do it. So congrats to all of you. General public comment, Nuri, you know, no one fucking likes you. No, but like, here's the thing, Nuri cannot look up, but Nuri, we all know that your, your presidency is in danger. You're not gonna be president the next go-around. Your, your colleagues actually fucking hate you. Paul, you got your fucking ass whooped by Kenneth Mahia, like it wasn't even fucking close. And then, and then you sent out an email talking about an insurrection? Paul, I hope you go to your fucking deathbed haunted, haunted by the shit the activists and the organizers and the community members in this room had to say about you. No one fucking likes you, Paul. Retire, get on with your fucking life, you're done. Mitch, how's your fucking fence, bro? Mitch, 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 that fence is just, just like your campaign, it's going down, dude. Joey, one percent, Joey, one percent. Not only does your colleagues don't like you, you got less than one percent of the vote, bro. No one fucking likes you, you're a loser. You're the biggest loser in this room. In this room full of losers, Joe Buskay.
Next speaker is Simon Tam. Simon Tam? Simon Tam, are you here? Simon Tam? You're gonna, you signed up for item number forty and general public comment?
I did, I did. So number forty is Gil Sadio moving money out of the city general funds to the cops again, again. This happens like every other week. And my question is, where is the line? Like, where's the line for you guys? Like, what's too much? Because the LAPD has been bleeding the budget dry for four and a half decades at least, right? This is, this is no different than what your predecessors have done. So any of you who are thinking that you are gonna go down in history as a great leader, you're doing nothing any different than your predecessors have done for four decades. Meanwhile, we have no money in the budget for anything else. We have so, we are so far behind on public housing. We are the second-largest city in the nation, and we don't even crack the top ten in terms of number of public housing units, because the LAPD is bleeding us dry.
And you can go into general.
Great. For my general public comment, I want to talk about the rhetoric that you all have used regarding last week's city council meeting when we shut it down. It's been said that we were violent, which is not true. It's been said that police escorted us out. We left on our own after everybody got a chance to speak, which is how a public meeting should work. And to compare that to an insurrection, Corretts, Nuri, completely unfair, okay? Because this is exactly the kind of speech, and chanting at a public meeting is exactly the sort of thing that the First Amendment was intended to protect. And tell me, in what other job, what other job could you have where you're just put into your position and then you expect to have absolutely no feedback, no performance review for your entire term in that job? Tell me. Last week was not an insurrection, honey. It was a performance review, and you failed.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Pete White. Pete White, are you here? Pete, you signed up to speak on items number four, one through four and general public comment.
What items am I on? Say that again?
I said you signed up for items number one through four and general public comment. You want to start with your items?
Yeah, I'm gonna start, I'm gonna start where I start. So, good morning to all the folks in the audience. What's up, y'all? How y'all doing? I'm just here to say, it is very clear that this city council doesn't give a damn about children, about homeless families, because if they did, the seventeen thousand children that you continue to put in front of this ordinance would not exist. I'm gonna say also to item forty, the counterinsurgency, the community policing, that is just another community robbery by the LAPD, another robbery of the budget. We're gonna say, the only way that folks are safe, our social determinants of safety is not more bullets and not more batons and not more police officers. For us, safety is defined by housing. Safety is defined by healthcare. Safety is defined by opportunities and not the politicking. It is interesting.
So you moved off.
It is interesting, City Attorney, that we allowed this city council to compare last week's city council meeting to an insurrection of white supremacists. I will say to you that all skinfolk ain't kinfolk, and those types of games that you play have deadly results, Nuri, and anyone else that did not stand up and say, that was not an insurrection, that was democracy in action. How dare you play those stupid fucking games with folks who aren't here doing your job?
Do you want to speak on items one through three?
We are not going anywhere, City Attorney. It sounds like, it sounds to me that you.
So, Speaker, do you want to speak on items one through three? Sorry. So, thank you. So, please.
Thank you.
Speak.
The next, the next speaker is Patrina McCall.
Speaker, you're disrupting the meeting. Please sit down now.
The next speaker is Patrina McCall.
All right, Speaker, the, the council president has ordered you to leave the meeting quietly. Sergeants, the man has been ordered removed.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Patrina McCall. Patrina McCall, are you here? Patrina? Anyone here with that name, Patrina? Next speaker? Alicia Smiles? Alicia Smiles? What is your name? Thank you. And then after, after you speak, it's Alicia Smiles, if that person's here.
You're a piece of shit. You're a piece of shit. And how dare you say that the people that are here are not unhoused? How fucking dare you? I live in District Fourteen.
You're speaking on items nineteen, twenty-six, and forty-three. No. Sergeants?
Bitch, you don't fucking listen, baby. Bitch, I am shit. You don't fucking say, these people are not on the fucking streets. Bitch, I live on the fucking streets, you piece of shit.
Let's hurt good. Let's hurt good.
Members, we're gonna take a short recess. Please head to the back.
Okay. For members of the audience, in case you can't hear, we're taking a recess while this is being taken care of.
Members, we're going into a twenty-minute recess?
Yo, do we have jail support for our comrades getting arrested here?
And Sergeants, please clear the room.
Yo, calm the fuck down!
...
And so you have always been an innovator, you have always been someone who is, you know, looking that within the rules and not breaking the rules, but figuring out a way to say yes, and figuring out how we can move our city forward in your role. You've been an outstanding partner, you're an incredible asset to this city, and let me be the first to congratulate you on what I know will be a unanimous vote on your confirmation. So congratulations.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rodriguez. Ted, would you want to say something? I don't want to put you on the spot, but it's been a very long and eventful morning.
I had a lot of speaking points, but I know it's been a long day for everyone, so I'll just say, you know, thank you to Councilmember Blumenfield, Rodriguez, thank you for the kind words, and I'm very excited, obviously very big shoes to fill with Gary leaving, but I've been there working with him, and our executive team is very strong, and we're not going to just stay with where we're at now, we're going to continue to move things forward and progress with Project Delivery and Development Services, and so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ted. And with that, we're going to go ahead and call the roll on item number five. Open the roll? I'm sorry, fifteen. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, let's move on to item sixteen. This item was called special by Mr. Bonin.
Just for the vote.
Just for the vote? Let's go ahead and prepare to vote on this. Mr. Sadio, you want to speak on item sixteen? Mr. Bonin has requested to go ahead and proceed with the vote. You're speaking on item sixteen? Go ahead.
Madam President, let me applaud you for your decorum and discipline this morning, managing an audience that, in their efforts to assert their First Amendment rights, crowd the First Amendment rights of the elected officials of the City of Los Angeles.
Jumped over the barriers and charged towards elected officials, endangering our staff and those members in the public, that's simply just not acceptable. We cannot accept that as, you know, a regular way to conduct yourself. I think for those of us who've been here for a number of years, I don't think it's ever, I've never witnessed anything like this. Um, you know, we often, some people that spoke earlier today were offended by the fact that we compared what happened last week to what occurred in our nation's capital on January 6th, but arguably, this is one step closer to that. Um, jumping over a barrier and putting, um, other people's lives at risk, that cannot be the norm around here, and we cannot legislate in fear. I certainly will not do that, but we cannot tolerate this kind of behavior and continue to disregard decorum here in our council chambers and our safety. So with that, members of the public, I just want to apologize to everyone who unfortunately had to witness what just happened a couple of minutes ago. Members, thank you for coming back to continue our meeting and continue to govern on behalf of the residents of Los Angeles. Um, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Blumenfield. Bonin. Buscaino. Sadio. De Leon. Harris Dawson. Caress. Cricorian. Lee. Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell. Price. Ramon. Rodriguez. Fourteen members present and quorum, Madam President.
Okay, I will close public comment for today's meeting. With that being said, Madam Clerk, we're going to go ahead and vote on the following items, items one through eleven, item thirteen, and items seventeen through forty-three. Can you please open the roll?
Madam President, real quick, for the street lighting items, the public hearing is now closed for items one through eleven. The tabulation of ballots shall take place in space three hundred of five-five-five Ramirez Street on Wednesday, August tenth, twenty twenty-two, at ten. To access the live stream, join Zoom meeting ID number nine-five-three-eight-six-two-eight-four-three-nine-three, passcode Prop two eighteen. Public announcement, a tabulation of ballots, and consideration of the final ordinance will take place at City Council on Tuesday, August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Thank you, Madam President. Council may now vote.
Okay, let's go ahead and open the roll on those items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, we're going to move on to item fifteen. This was called special by both Mr. Blumenfield and Ms. Rodriguez. Mr. Blumenfield?
Great. Ted, if you want to come forward, this, this item confirms the mayor's appointment of Ted Allen as our city engineer. Uh, I was going to say this is going to be the most exciting item on the agenda today, but, you know, unless the folks here are gonna, gonna riot, I, I think... It's a little anticlimactic, but, but Ted, while it may be an anticlimactic item here, we're really excited about the fact that you're, you're, you're going to take this on, assuming you still want to do it after what you witnessed here today. Um, you've got some big shoes to fill, of course, following Gary Lee Moore, um, but we know you're the right guy for the job. Uh, just to refresh folks, I mean, everybody here knows you because you've been a, a part of this city, but Ted spent the first twenty years of his city career working in Project Delivery, and the last eight years as deputy city attorney, deputy city engineer, yeah, as far as I know, you were not attorney, uh, over the Development Services Program. This is often an unseen and unsung part of BoE, but its permitting and land development functions are what allows Los Angeles to flourish with new housing, commercial buildings, and more. You've overseen the Bureau's technological functions, including helping to lead the Build L.A. project, which is so important, and you're going to build on that Build L.A. project even more. Your creative, out-of-the-box thinking helped lead to our micro trenching ordinance, which has both reduced the cost of installing fiber for better internet service and reduced damage to our streets. Ted has led the way on streamlined transition from temporary alfresco program, which was the lifeblood for restaurants during the pandemic, to a permanent program. Uh, and importantly, Ted has also been focused on bringing up the next generation of city engineers. So important to, to think about the whole department and, and bring people up with you. He coordinates BoE's rotation program for new hires, is an executive member of BoE's Racial Equity Committee. He works with students at Cal State LA's Computer Science Department on senior projects, including a prototype robot to perform sidewalk assessments, moving us into the robotic age here, uh, and with UCLA on a project to use technology to assess the conditions of hillside streets, which is an important effort for many parts of my district, as well as the entire ci- city. Uh, Ted is also lead in developing BoE's outreach to local elementary and middle schools to encourage students to pursue engineering careers. You know, city engineering is part and parcel of everything that we do. This is an incredibly important role that you're taking on, uh, and you have the experience and the know-how, uh, you certainly have my confidence, and I think with today's vote, you'll, you'll, it'll be evident that you have everyone here's confidence. So with that, I urge an I-vote to confirm Ted Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfield. Ms. Rodriguez?
Thanks, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Blumenfield, for, uh, covering, I think, why we all know that Ted is the most qualified individual for this job. Uh, I, I would be remiss, of course, if I didn't acknowledge your better half as well. Julie Allen, as many of you know, was the project lead on the Sixth Street Viaduct, um, and so it's, this dynamic duo have had a combination of city service that is just unparalleled, and we are so thankful, uh, for your calm in the wake of a storm. Uh, you know, as much as I was trying to get you out of harm's way, you were just chilling there in the front row, uh, as everything was erupting around you, which really said to me, you are ready for this job. Uh, and, uh, again, if, if I didn't already know all the other things that made you so qual- highly qualified for this role, uh, you know, having Gary's retire, having Gary retire was, of course, uh, something that we all felt, uh, in the city, and I know, uh, how near and dear he was to all the city, uh, engineers and, and everyone at the Bureau of Engineering. What I know is that there is no one more prepared to take the reins and lead this department than you. And, uh, you know, as I, when, when I saw the mayor nomin- the letter nominating you, I was just so pleased, uh, because in our years of working together, uh, pre-alfresco dining, we worked together to help establish some very baseline methods of trying to introduce sidewalk dining in areas that had historically been prohibited, and so, uh, you have always been an innovator, you have always been someone who is, you know, looking that within the rules and not breaking the rules, but figuring out a way to say yes, and figuring out how we can move our city forward in your role. Uh, you've been an outstanding partner, you're an incredible asset to this city, and, uh, let me be the first to congratulate you on what I know will be a unanimous vote on your confirmation, so congratulations.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rodriguez. Ted, would you want to say something? Don't want to put you on the spot, but it's been a very long and, um...
I had a lot of speaking points, but I know it's been a long day for everyone, so I'll just say, you know, thank you to Councilmember Blumenfield Rodriguez, thank you for the kind words, and I'm, I'm very excited, uh, obviously very big shoes to fill with Gary leaving, but I've been there working with him, and our executive team is very strong, and we're not going to just stay with where we're at now, we're going to continue to move things forward and progress with Project Delivery and Development Services, and so thank you.
Thank you very much, Ted. And with that, we're going to go ahead and call the roll on item number five. Open the roll? I'm sorry, fifteen. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, let's move on to item sixteen. This item was called special by Mr. Bonin.
Just for the vote.
Just for the vote? Um, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on this. Mr. Sadio, you want to speak on item sixteen? Mr. Bonin has requested to go ahead and proceed with the vote. You're speaking on item sixteen? Go ahead.
Madam President, let me applaud you for your, um, decorum and discipline this morning, managing, uh, an audience that, in their efforts to assert their First Amendment rights, crowd the First Amendment rights of the elected officials of the City of Los Angeles. Now we're here for the matter, the substance of the matter, and I want to be clear, I wanted to make a point that I made, I tried to make last week. Those who argue that this doesn't solve homelessness, doesn't move us forward in this area, are absolutely right. But not on point. Because the point of this measure is not to solve homelessness at all. The point of this measure is to protect safe passage to schools and to daycare centers, childcare centers. That's the point of this measure. I always ask my staff, what problem are we trying to solve? Is this the best way to solve it? Is this the only way to solve it? And so that's the problem we're trying to solve, to have such energy wasted on organizing people to come here to raise this question, and yet to be so far off point is amazing. It's, it's something to witness, to see such energy misguided, misdirected, a lack of strategy and tactics. It's just amazing, because what we're doing here and what this provision is about is about parents and children, as I articulated last week. Children where we used to send the National Guard to protect their passage into schools, cases that began in this state with the Lemon Grove incident, with Westminster, Mendesby Westminster, as I articulated, with Brown versus the Board of Education, then to the Plyler case in Texas, then to Prop one eighty-seven settlement, Letitia A. and the California Dream Act, all designed to protect their rights to education as a First Amendment right and as a vehicle and a strategy for civil rights and human rights for communities of color in this nation. So this is simply a mere effort, not the most profound, not the most strategic or tactical, it's more like an emergency room. And it's more like us trying to say, look, yes, we have these problems, we recognize them, but at this moment, we have competing problems, competing issues that call for us to pay attention to, and one is children in the city. The, the Los Angeles Unified School District has called for our support, but before I heard from them, I voted on this issue in Sacramento. We're always trying to figure out how we protect children. Car seats, rules about when they consume, what they can consume, where they can go, what type of parental vision they need, what they can see, and yet to protect their rights to go to school were now trumped. Were trumped by the desires to elevate this situation to a level that trumps the rights of these children and the movements for civil rights and human rights in this nation. The movements of Mexican-Americans in the state, in the city, in the school district are now being trumped because people cannot do two things at one time, they cannot accommodate a safe passage for children and a more sound and reasonable temporary placement of the unhoused. So as I said last week, I stand for the children, and I stand for the future, and I ask for an I-vote. And I applaud you, though, because democracy and free press and freedom of association and freedom of speech require a forum where all that can play out, and you have stood to the crowd last week and today to say that that will not be deterred by the, those who yell the lou- the loudest. Might is not right. In this case, right will be might. We must protect the children, we must have a foresight, we must do more than one, and we must look to the future for the city. For that, I ask for an I-vote. I thank you.
Mr. Caress?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not sure what I'm going to say, because I'm just so shocked and angry. I mean, we wake up every morning as public servants, and we do it because we love the city and because we love the people that make it up, and we're here trying to do that. And for a group of people to continually try to take over City Council to prevent us from doing our jobs, it's just unthinkable, but here we are, and we're seeing it again, this time with people actually jumping over benches and charging at us. It's not the way we should be allowing, uh, a business to be conducted in the City of Los Angeles. And this is an issue with, with opinions on both sides, obviously, um, but as, as Mr. Sadio noted, uh, this is not an issue where we can solve homelessness with this action, but that could actually be said about every single thing we try to do. Well, building ten thousand units of HHH housing, well, that's not going to stop homelessness, and it's true, not by itself. Building hundreds of tiny homes, that's not going to stop homelessness, but all of it's a step in the right direction. And in this case, it's not really addressing solving the issue, this is something to protect the kids in our city. And it's not a phony issue, it's a real one. Parents walk by encampments and they're met with shouted obscenities at their kids, they're met with things pretty vile being thrown at their children, um, and there are folks that are mentally ill in these encampments that have done some pretty dangerous things. In my district, in the last few years, we've had a hundred-and-two-year-old man hacked to death with a machete by a homeless person. We've had another homeless person in my neighborhood jump a fence and stab an unsuspecting person to death. I mean, these things are happening. We had a young woman on La Brea in, uh, in a store stabbed twenty-six times by a homeless person that posed first as a customer and for no apparent reason. Uh, we have to provide some kind of protection for our kids, and it's not an easy issue, we don't want to just move homeless people around, but if it's a question of endangering our children or asking folks in an encampment to move a couple hundred feet in a different direction, I think the choice is clear. I don't think we're putting that much upon homeless individuals to move a modest distance to where our children can be safer, but I think it is putting upon the children and parents of our city to say, we're not going to do anything, we don't care if, uh, a homeless encampment is blocking the entrance to a school or making it difficult for you to go to that school. And we have parents now that are driving two blocks to drive into a parking lot to drop their kids off to school, or driving even a block just for their safety. That's not a circumstance we should be in, and we have to take some action. This is the right thing to do, and just because Kenneth Mahia and his band of anarchists tried to break up two different meetings, uh, we're not going to stand for it, and we're going to take the action that we need to take.
Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, colleagues, I wasn't going to speak on this today, I was just going to call for a separate vote, but since a few people have spoken, there's a few things I want to, uh, respond to and rebut, uh, because a few folks have, have talked about misguided energy, uh, uh, and doing things that are unthinkable. I submit, as I have consistently, that this issue is misguided energy, uh, and that, that, that what we are going to do, uh, is actually, um, uh, a, 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 a lack of strategy and a lack of tactics, and as Mr. Caress said, ultimately, uh, unthinkable. The, the two people who spoke talked about how, well, yes, of course, this isn't going to solve homelessness, you know, uh, no one thing does, and, and we have to do a whole bunch of different things. Fact of the matter is, this is going to make the problem worse. This is going to disconnect people from services. This is going to channel our time and our money and our energy into moving people around instead of moving people inside. It is actually harmful. I don't think the council has done its due diligence on this issue at all. Uh, at, at least when Mr. Buscaino attempted this last year, which I opposed, there were specific addresses listed. On this, we don't have a map, we have not done any study of how comprehensive and how impactful this will be, uh, we don't have a list of the daycare centers that will be impacted, uh, or of, uh, the, uh, independent or, or, or private schools. Uh, the only map that I have seen about the impact of this has been from someone running for office. Uh, we have not calculated what percentages of our districts will be impacted by this. The only chart I have seen on that is by somebody running for office, who has shown that, uh, in the data that he and his team have put together, uh, that as much as thirty percent of a bunch of districts will be impacted by this, that Council District One, forty-eight percent of it will be impacted by this. This body has talked about how it wants to get to solve this problem, and it doesn't want to be guided by and locked in lawsuits forever. I cannot for the life of me figure out how, what this is doing. If we're talking about thirty or forty or forty-eight percent of different districts, I cannot for the life of me figure out how this is at all consistent with the Boise decision, and I cannot for the life of me figure out how this is at all consistent with the settlement in the Alliance case that this council has entered into. A settlement that this council has entered into saying, we want to get out of lawsuits, we want to move past lawsuits and get to solutions. Uh, uh, I, I will close just by saying this. Every time we discuss this issue, it is a waste of time and energy and attention, and by approving this ordinance, you are guaranteeing you are going to be back into conversations over lawsuits and settlements and what the city can and cannot do, and that is where the time and the money and the energy and the focus will be, and you are going to be discussing forty-one eighteen like a nightmare Groundhog Day for years and years to come.
Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to address, you know, another cynical and misleading, uh, statement by Mr. Bonin, perpetuating this false narrative that this will disconnect people from services and that there's no knowledge of where the daycare centers or schools are. Well, if you knew your district, you'd know exactly where all the daycare centers and all the schools are, private and public. We, we do, we don't need a map, we know where ours are, and you should as well. So I, I want to give, uh, support for what Mr. Sadio said and what Mr. Caress said. I have outreach practitioners that interact with every individual in every encampment in the Thirteenth District. That will continue, whether it's, uh, outside of five hundred feet of a school or wherever in my district, because we, uh, that's what we do, and we've been doing that for years, and we're stepping up as never before, because I'm, I am funding these outreach teams and augmenting these services and have been and continually will be, because our goal is to get everyone under a roof and on a path to wellness, and we don't do that by just sitting on our hands and doing nothing and waiting for some sort of perfect solution, and this is definitely not about solving homelessness, it never was. It's about protecting children. I went to public schools my whole life, my parents both worked, there were four of us, we struggled, but my parents never had to worry about us walking to school. We walked to school together to protect one another from bullies, but never from what school kids in Los Angeles, uh, have to face every day, and the parents who send their kids to, to public schools don't have the luxury always of even driving a block or two to protect them. They have to trust in their leaders to offer a level of protection while we, at the same time, because we can do two things at once, work to house people, to get them i- under a roof and on a path to wellness. So let's stop the cynicism and the false narratives, uh, let's move forward, uh, in, in, in both, on both issues, and let's get this done. This is just, uh, the beginning. We're always at a beginning, because our work will never be done, but we are, as never before, standing up more housing solutions than ever and, uh, working to get adequate funding for the City of Los Angeles. I'll be going to Sacramento again next week to work with our state legislators, so we can keep the funding and the resources that are commensurate with a need in the City of Los Angeles. I've been doing that for years, will continue doing that, I invite anyone who wants to come with me to come, um, because we can do these things, but we have a very, very core obligation to protect children, and we're doing that while we stand up more housing solutions and get people under a roof and on a path to wellness. We can, and we are doing both. I ask for an I-vote. Thank you.
Mr. Buscaino?
Boy, has the tide turned. A year ago, and thank you, Mr. Sadio, Mr. Bonin, for recognizing this effort, um, I heard loud and clear from parents, faculty, um, from a number of schools, not only in my district, but throughout the city. My district, Normont Elementary School, in CD eight, Miller Elementary School, Hundred-and-eighteenth Elementary School, Barrett Elementary School, Markham Middle School, Joiner Elementary School, Winda Makes Early Education Center, Dyma Lee High School, Washington Primary Center, in CD eight and nine, Ninety-seventh Street Early Education Center, Hundred-and-twelfth Elementary School, Wisdom Elementary School, also in CD eleven, Westminster Elementary School. We're not making this up here. Members, thank you. I anticipate this will pass today. Thank you on behalf of the students, the parents, the teachers, the administrators, Mr. Carvalho, who came to this body, who had the backbone to come to this body as a new superintendent of schools demanding we take action. This is an issue of restoring order and safety among our most precious sites in the City of Los Angeles, our school sites. Our students are already traumatized with socioeconomic issues, let alone they should not be exposed to sex acts, they should not be exposed to open drug use, they should not be exposed to psychotic behavior that's taking place right next to our schoolyards. But here is another challenge, members, this will pass. It is now up to us to hold the, the people in this building accountable for enforcing forty-one eighteen at our school sites. And a school is a school is a school. You don't need a sign to indicate where a school is located anywhere in the City of Los Angeles. A daycare is a daycare facility is a daycare facility, you don't need a sign to indicate where a daycare facility is. And lastly, members, forty-one eighteen, if you want to see how useful forty-one eighteen is and how effective it's been, come to my district. We have actually saved lives for ensuring that people have a choice to make, go into an available bed, get help, or if it's your choice for not getting help, move along. We owe it to everyone, not only our residents, our schools, our businesses, but those who need the most help among us. Thank you.
Seeing no other members in the queue, we're just going to go ahead and prepare to vote on this item, and Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item sixteen. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, three noes.
Okay, um, Madam Clerk, where are we at now?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Those are posted and referred. Members, are there any announcements? Seeing no announcements, can we all rise for adjourning motions? Any adjourning motions to my right, Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I'm doing an emerg- uh, adjourning motion today for Val- Valerie- Colleagues, I'm doing an adjourning motion today for Valerie Babayan, sorry, Valerie The world became a brighter place when Valerie Babayan was born on December 13th, 1987, in Armenia. At the age of four, Valerie moved to Los Angeles with her mother, Sona Hatracian. She was quick to grasp the English language and went on to successfully graduate from high school. Valerie was incredibly artistic and loved to create. After high school, she worked in the music industry for some years, and then found her true passion in writing. She wrote scripts as she had endless ideas for TV shows and movies that she wanted to film. Valerie loved reading and watching films, getting inspired by anything to create her art of writing. With that passion, she was able to soon curate numerous vegan recipes with her mother out of their small kitchen in Hollywood. Valerie was a true entrepreneur, always creating, building, and experimenting, who single-handedly grew that passion into a successful business she called "To Bake and Be." Valerie's wholesale business took off, as more and more cafes in Silver Lake and East Hollywood area were requesting her unique baked goods. Her small business evolved into a full bakery and vegan kitchen, The Good Good L.A. It soon became one of the most loved vegan restaurants in the area, another creation that highlighted her love for community, food, and business. Valerie's positivity and love for life was contagious. She always supported and loved her customers. She was also a proud citizen who helped her neighborhood community by organizing gatherings to address a multitude of, of issues. Valerie had courage, drive, and incredible, an incredible amount of love for her mother, her friends, and her community. She'll leave a big void in our hearts and her community. Valerie is survived by her mother, be, and, who's beyond, and family and friends. Her memorial service will be held at Kevork Armenian Church on August 21st at 2:00 p.m., and a special neighborhood memorial at The Good Good Shop on Santa Monica and Edgemont at 5:30 p.m. Taken far, far too soon, I adjourn in the memory of Valerie Babayan. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other, other adjourning motions to my right? Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Madam President. Members, I'd like to rise and adjourn in memory of Luis Javier Esparza, the father of Irma Esparza Diggs, who, as we know, is the senior executive and director of the Federal Advocacy Team for the National League of Cities. Luis passed away peacefully at his home on, on July 24th. He was born in Mexico de parents Guadalupe Miguel. He was a beloved father and grandfather, affectionately known as Papa Lu. As a young man, he learned to, the trade of jewelry-making before coming to the United States. Making Texas his forever home, he earned his living in construction and began his, his company, Esparza Drywall. He went on to build apartments throughout Dallas and became a facilities engineer. He would later transition to work for the Dallas Independent School District as a crossing guard and eventually become a physical education assistant and crossing guard for the Carroll Independent School District. Luis, also known as Mr. Esparza, became a buddy to many of the elementary students, who he safely guarded every day until his retirement in 2020. Just as much as he worked hard, Luis found ways to truly enjoy retirement. He continued to find ways to be self-taught in various crafts. He began gardening and left behind a garden of love with an array of plants and fruit trees he, he germinated himself. His accomplishments and skills were a great part of his success, but his family was a center of his life. Luis leaves a legacy of a man who truly loved his family through words and actions. May forever rest in peace, and to our love and condolences to Irma and her family. Thank you, Madam President. Members.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Any other adjourning motions, members? Seeing none, I'm meeting as adjourned.